Good evening. Good evening. I call this meeting to order. We did not have an executive session before this meeting. So at this point, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, we're a little late getting started. We have a lot of parking because there's a lot going on on campus, which is always a wonderful thing to have a school as busy. And I apologize for my voice and maybe I'm a little disgusting as well, but I'm not contagious, so I definitely want to know that. So do we have any public comments on agenda items only? Anything online? We do not. So at this point, I'd like to talk, I'd like to turn this over to Dr. Fox for discussion items.
Well, thank you very much. At this time, we are going to tackle the component of instruction. And what would I like to do is very similar to what we did last year. Let's kind of walk through a series of those elements and see at that point if there's any conversation that needs to be had on any of those elements before we continue and move on. And our, our goal tonight is to kind of go over that as well as any additional items that we want to, to go over and see where we're at time wise to be mindful of everybody's time because this is, you know, certainly a series of meetings. But, you know, the, the pace at which we move is really dependent upon the conversations that we have. And all questions are good questions and we welcome all of those questions this evening. And if we don't have the answers, certainly I have an incredible team here that has answers. And if we can't collectively come up with it, we'll, we'll record it and we'll get back to you on those responses. So at this time, we're going to take, I'm just going to take a second and pull up that for myself as well here.
While we're looking for that, what time is this meeting supposed to be over?
Nine.
Is it in six to nine or is it six to nine?
Yeah.
Okay. Not that we can't end early, but where we may want to go, but we tend to put a timeframe on these because they could go till three in the morning.
Absolutely.
We've got four of them, so we don't need to do them all in one night.
Yep. So here you'll see at the beginning, just kind of the breakdown and component of this first category, you'll see teachers. And we're going to tackle salaries and benefits, which they're grouped together in those categories. In the first section is elementary. You'll see the, the difference between the two categories anticipated for 2026 and the difference of 2025. Salaries are a part of the collective bargaining agreement and included in the, in the teacher's matrix that's located in the current CBI. I do want to point out number 42 instructional aids. Instructional aids are broken down in this category of instruction by building, but those will be reclassified and moved into, they're also located in the special education section. So they will be removed from this section. Thank you. And play, and kept properly in the, in the area of special education.
Are we planning to have the description go in for line 45? Or are we?
Can't hear you, Leah.
Are we planning to have the description going in for line 45? Which I think is a line item in each of the.
Yeah. Category number 45, we can, we're going to absolutely place that in there. And that's the potential to take one funding holiday based upon our reserves from the South Central Trust.
Well, that's not, it was what we did last year, right? Not the potential for it, right?
Last.
We did that last year, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, that's correct. Last year for 2025. My apologies.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. I was thinking. Next category is anticipated charter school tuition. We have to classify that into two categories. You'll see year over end. That's the tuition payment for cyber charter schools is made up on the PDE 363 form, I believe is the, is the number for it. And that's derived a very complex calculated formula. And that gets sent in every year, which makes up our, our tuition rates for cyber charter. We have started to pay our cyber charter payments directly versus having that removed from our subsidy that comes in through what's called FAI.
Can I just ask quickly, are those numbers based on for next year actual, well, it has to be projected enrollment. So do we just assume like our charter school enrollment is going to go up a certain percent and add that amount of money? Or, or do we have an idea of which students are going to continue on in cyber? I'm just curious. I'm sure it's perfectly fine. I'm just curious how that, what's that thought is?
Yeah, we tried to take a look at every year, of course, it goes up. We tried to take a look at it at an increase as well as take a look at what our trends have been from our calculated student enrollment from the past years and try to make the best anticipated projection that we can based on, based on those numbers.
Thank you.
And I think I asked this last year, but just for the benefit of those that are new to the board and maybe other people in the public. I remember asking why the elementary school was lower, so much lower, as if it was only one student out of the elementary school, right? That's not reflective of the number of students we have from elementary that are in cyber charter. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's not. It's kind of just a, just a classification number to break down just how we, how we delineate the two based on a report we have to submit to the, to the federal government, which breaks down state, it breaks down K to five, which is considered elementary and then six through 12. It's just a classification. It comes out of the same, these two categories when you look at the codes, it's, it's the exact same code. So it's all grouped together, but broken down for that reporting purpose.
And then I think it's also important to note for those that are maybe listening in that that $2.49 million does not include tuition for special education. That is over and above this number. So looking at that, that number, it is close to almost 10% of our overall budget is going to cyber charter tuition.
That's correct. And that number continues to rise.
So is the specialized cyber charter a different place here? I missed it. Okay.
It is. Yeah, we haven't got to that category. Kind of taking a look at some supplies. You'll see the basic supplies. Our, our team has done a great job. Our teachers have done a great job working with their, their grade level leaders, working with our principals to kind of go through and project, what do they currently have? What are they projecting that they need? Certain needs again are based upon the grade level, certain projects that they do, anticipated enrollment with students, what some of the supplies are consumables, so they wear out relatively quickly. And you'll see that reflected here as well as we go through, you know, your tape, your markers, again pencils, dry erase markers, these consumables that get used on a regular basis. Taking a look for the total for supplies, just for the kindergarten grade level, you'll see it's a increase of $443.18. It's an anticipated increase for that because again, you know, as we, as we continue with enrollment, we watch those numbers, try to make sure our kindergarten enrollment classes are relatively small and they do a good job of making sure that they are balanced out appropriately. The next would be supplies for Title I. Title I is a, is a broad federal kind of category. And Title I includes reading specialists, supplies for reading specialists. We also have a math specialist at the elementary that works with students. While it's not necessarily paid via Title I, it's, we consider that part of our title programs, or maybe there's some of it that's offset. And these are part of our schoolwide program and we submit part of our plan associated with that. And these are some consumables to continue that they use to work with our students in small groups or push in to the classrooms. When I look at that, it is a reduction of $1,021.18 from the 2025 school year. Supplies for ESL, it's English as a second language. ESL is district wide, so it's $195. It's a reduction of $134.21 for some basic supplies for our EL program. All right, we'll roll to first grade and looking at the first grade section. I'll give you a moment to review the first grade section and let me know if there's any questions as you review that first grade section. You'll see the change between 26 and 25. Pretty standard supplies. Hearing no questions, we'll move into second grade, progressing up to grade levels. You'll see 617 through 619, some journals and some materials associated with the program foundations. Third grade? Yes?
For all of these, there's nothing listed for 2025. Is that because we didn't have it broken out this granular last year?
Yeah, there's a little plus off to the left. If you click on that, it'll expand everything that was purchased in 2025 as well. I just have it hidden. So on the left side, really under fourth grade supplies, there should be a little plus.
Gotcha. I think, I think just by, just curiosity wise, because like it seems like supplies stayed pretty even. That one doubled. And I think probably Marcy was just wondering, what was it that we added in there to have it go up? It's miniscule in terms of the overall budget, but I'm just, I think maybe curiosity.
I think when I look at that, the first thing that gleams to me off the top is the, the cost of some of the foundations materials. Those are just some consumables, but that probably was there. But we can look at a, at a more detailed variance between the two to see. But off the top of my head, I, I do not have that detailed response. I'll have to, I'll have to take a deeper dive in.
It, it doesn't really look like there's any one particular line item that's a big thing that's, you know, it, you know, it's probably, it is what it is. It just seemed out of the norm of the other ones, yeah.
I believe we looked at third grade and we'll go into the last grade at the elementary school, fourth grade? Hearing no questions on that. We'll go into supplies for art. Our art teacher at the elementary sees every student? That's the case for just about every building, except for high school, it's a little more of an elective. Supplies for music class. One of the larger items is 831, and we did try to share that item as we did some budget overviews during caucus, that it's time to replace a failing claravoya with a, a digital piano or keyboard style piano. And that's line 831. He's done a really good job, the teacher of researching what would work best over time and what would work best for his class. Supplies for computer. Physical education. Line number 874 is of particular interest to me with the Fox 40 Classic official whistle. A quality whistle with a good name. I don't get any, any money from that. All right. That'd be great. Supplies principal. This was a question, I believe, that was in the question document here where the supplies, you're also going to see later, it'll be in the, under the principals tab. So here, I believe what our plan is going to be is to take under miscellaneous supplies and place those for supplies for new teacher for elementary, supplies for new teacher middle school, and supplies for new teacher high school. And it will be higher at the elementary and less at the middle and high school because we believe that an elementary teacher coming onboard oftentimes would need more supplies or consumables than the other teachers.
So, so one of those is new teacher and the other miscellaneous supplies. But is that the whole 2,500 for new staff? Does it need, is it two things or is it?
So what we're going to do is we're going to repurpose that 2,000 because that miscellaneous supplies you'll see back on the office of the principals. So we're going to take that 2,000 and just as an example, maybe add 500 to the new teachers' line there in the elementary. And then we're going to move, you know, 750 down into the middle school and high school for new teachers.
None of the other principals had their principal supplies or anything in there either? So we'll add?
Correct.
We'll add that for the, for the other buildings?
So we're going to move the 2,000 and call it new teacher supplies?
Okay.
And then back on the office of the principals, they have their own like miscellaneous.
But will it be new teacher supplies? Not, I don't want to get in the weeds, just elementary or each?
We're going to move new teachers to the, 750 to middle school and 750 to high school.
And add, are we going to add a 2,000 to each of those or?
No, we're just taking the 2,000 and breaking it into three different categories.
By three, okay, good. With more going to elementary and less to middle high school. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, it's not back there. They just have a miscellaneous principals fund back there. There is no teachers under.
Eight, line 886, that's going to go away.
No, that's going to stay. We're going to add $500 of the 2,000 to that to make that $1,000 for a new teacher, new teachers at the, at the elementary school. Then I'm going to move 750 of the 2,000 down under the middle school because right now there is no middle school new teachers fund. So I'm going to put 750 in there and then I'm going to put a new teachers under the high school for 750 as well.
All right. We can move on to, you'll see the subtotals there, books and printed materials for the elementary school. Lines number 914 to 921. Dues and fees at the elementary school. And now rolling into the middle school, you'll see salaries and benefits rolled into each other for lines number, line numbers, excuse me, 936 to 971.
Were those dues and fees classified somewhere else in 2025?
Yeah, they could have been. There were some categories that I moved or couldn't find or.
Just called dues and fees?
Yeah. Maybe there's something new. I don't, I don't remember, but I couldn't find where they were in 2025.
And some of those could be, a couple of those smaller conferences could be new too and just specified and, and more detail out, detailed out, excuse me. Supplies for the, for middle school, fifth grade. Lines number 10, line number 1095. To line number 1190.
Sorry, I'm just looking. So are we not, are we decreasing fifth grade teachers by one but adding a sixth grade teacher?
No, I don't believe so.
Because it looks like you have salaries for seven fifth grade teachers. And five sixth grade teachers. Is somebody moving from fifth grade to sixth grade? Because then in 2026, you have salaries for six fifth grade teachers and now six sixth grade teachers. So is somebody's salary missing? But we had seven salaries for fifth grade teachers.
No.
In 2025.
We certainly will take a look at that.
Yeah.
It comes out to six and six in this budget, right? This budget year?
Yeah, this budget year it comes out to six and six, but somewhere for 2025, there was a, a, a seventh in there.
Right, but there was only five sixth grade teachers.
Right.
So I see what you're saying.
But that's what I'm saying, like, is somebody moving from fifth grade up to sixth grade or?
They did a couple of years ago. Mrs. Coulter went from fourth to fifth to sixth, but.
Maybe her salary just.
Last year, this year it's the same, it's still 12 total in those grades, but it's six and six.
They must have just had in the wrong line.
In the wrong line, yeah, that's what I was.
Last year.
Well, I guess the reason I'm asking is because the salaries don't match. Like if it's moving from line to line, the salaries don't match. So that's what doesn't make sense is why it doesn't, why it stood out was it wasn't like it was just one moving to the other.
Yeah.
You're taking 112, but only adding in 101. So something doesn't, it looks like it's two different people.
Yeah, you can't look at the line items. They're not aligned because you'll look, some of them will be a lot big higher and some will be a lot lower. I don't have last year's file by individual name. We, I just had it by the, the categories you see here.
Okay.
So now I created a file this year by name, so next year I'll try to line up the line items better so that way you can see the actual increase or decrease.
But, but thank you, Jason, for what you have done. I, I don't think there's probably another board in the state that takes this close of a look at their budget as we do. And I know it's a lot of work, but this is, I'm glad Marcy was able to ask that question because this is the first time in a number of years we've been able to compare apples to apples. It's not a perfect apples to apples because you're making improvements and changes, but I'm, I'm excited we're able to do that. So gudos to you. And I'm just going to take the time, I didn't recognize Mr. Medina over there. So this is Ken Medina. He's our new, we, we're, I don't know if he's hired yet, but, oh, he's our new co, we hired you. Congratulations. Welcome on board. And you're excited and you're here to hear us go over our budget. For those of you who don't know Mr. Medina, he's our new comptroller. He's been with us before. We're happy to have you on board. Welcome.
And I just want to say, thank you for, I mean, it is a, it is a pleasure coming back. So I'm under good leadership, so thank you.
You always made me feel like you thought this was the most special place in the world. So I appreciate that.
I call it the old schoolhouse on the river.
Well, you are officially formally one of us, so appreciate it. Welcome Blackhawks. And feel free to engage in this conversation, of course.
For clarification, just so that I know, these, when you're looking at 25 to 26, the numbers like per teacher, per, like if I look at math teacher one, from 25 to 26 isn't necessarily the same person.
Correct.
So it's not looking like it's, somebody's getting a pay cut.
Correct.
Which I think needs to be called out because it looks like when you look at this, that if you look at it, that a particular position is getting a pay cut and that's not the case, you have to look at then for the purposes of this budget, only the overall sum because this is not apples to apples, so to speak.
Not by line? Yes.
Yeah, and also to that point, if there is a, an increase or decrease on a given line, it doesn't mean that there's necessarily a pay cut. It could just be how they changed their benefit declaration or, or something, or we hired a different teacher that came in with a different place on the pay scale, right? So there's a bunch of different reasons that we could see a difference in numbers. Okay.
So line 970, again, just like up in the elementary, the middle school aids will be taken that out because those are back in the special. be taken that out because those are back in the special ed categories as well. So, and you'll see the same thing at the high school.
Did you say they were duplicated or you're just moving them to that category?
They were duplicated.
They're duplicated?
Yes.
Okay. That's good. That's a good.
Do we have any non-special ed aides?
Yes, we do. We have, right now, we're actually looking for a study hall aide, so if anybody's interested in that position. We do have some cafeteria aides, we have some lunch, well, lunch cafeteria, sorry, and we have some recess aides, and we have a library aide as well.
They would, we would have to leave them here, correct, or no?
I think for ultimately, they could, they could be grouped up and categorized because they serve all students, so we could place them in special education category.
Okay. I'm just assuming anything under category of special ed could be used IDEA funds for, but we couldn't use IDEA funds for a non-special ed aide, that would be the only.
Correct, yep. Looking at middle school supplies, we'll do a kind of a broad sweeping category here in lines 1095. To 1190. I think we did do that, I'm sorry. No, you're fine.
This is why I don't like Google Docs.
It can always be repaired. Supplies for the sixth grade, 1312. Feel like we're doing budget bingo, right? I could go down and we could, sorry. To 1473. Supplies, math, seventh and eighth grade. We're looking at lines 1505. And please, at any point, stop me. 1550. And just for clarification, we do have one aide that assists with our reading specialist as well. So an instructional aide that works with our title program. Two aides? Thank you. Okay. ELA reading, seventh and eighth grade, lines 1594. To line 1670. Line 1671 is just, as well as 1669, 1670, and 1671 will be deleted. Those are, those are just extra lines in there? Yep. Thank you. Thank you. And looking at that, there was no, there was no number factor associated with those. That one stays. There should be two ELA sets, correct? Yeah. Science, seventh and eighth grade, supplies. 1728 to 1760, where it says snake.
I know as a former science teacher, I get all excited seeing the alpales and all the things. All righty, let's go back to the classroom.
Social studies, always a good one to talk about. We have lines 17 to 78, 17 to 83. Onto supplies for art for the middle school, line 1792. To line 1910.
Dr. Fox, I have a question. Do you know, was youth art day, because youth art day is here under supplies art, so is that just the supplies that they needed for youth art day or was that broken out by building? Because the youth art day that we had before was like $1,700 and this is $325. So do you know off the top of your head?
So here, I think it's the youth art day registered here is from 2025. So I think we'll see that category come up again in dues and fees.
Per building versus just as a district?
I'm gonna scroll ahead and see if we see it again because I, I believe it's, it's gonna reoccur, but I believe youth art day is from the Perry County Council of Arts and it does involve some registration of students, some setups and some small fees, but yes, there are supplies involved that we would, we would use for that particular event, but.
So is that different than the 1,700 that was at the beginning of the budget?
I think that includes our, trying to look ahead a little bit here.
Do you think they clumped it all together? That's what I'm asking, like, is it? All together as one? Okay.
And we could check with our teachers to see if that, that number that was under elementary includes all three buildings and all three programs.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that there's, like, if it's, like, is there a registration fee and, like, as a district and then their supplies and are we accounting for that to make sure that they have what they need? I mean, obviously, I want us to continue to participate in that.
I, it's an amazingly worthwhile program, but it seems like a lot of money to participate in a youth art day, in Perry County Youth Art Day. Just, you know what I mean? Just seems like a lot.
We will check on that, that area. We have some miscellaneous for supplies for music. Supplies for world language, Spanish. Looking ahead at, and again, stop at any point. Physical education, health, lines 1966 to line 1984. We're getting into some good years. Supplies STEM, 1990 to 2023. Under lines.
I have a question. So world language, does that mean we didn't have anything last year budget for world language?
We could definitely take a look at the comparison between the two.
Yeah, just see where, yeah, where.
I don't believe it was anything.
Because we've always had Spanish down in the middle school.
We had, and I don't believe it was as detailed in the past.
Yeah, like I said, I took the liberty of creating some of my own categories, not being able to find exactly where it was.
Where it was, okay.
I don't believe.
Well, and at budget time last year, there was discussion whether or not high school's kids would be going to the middle school and helping to teach the curriculum, whether it would be a whole different things, so the problem. Got my point, I'll just stop.
Yeah, I think for STEM, you're gonna see more, again, of those consumables, some of those things that you can use year over year, and some of those just basic things like I'm looking here, it's like fabric sheets are used for a specific, probably some type of static electricity exercise or lab that they'll be doing within the components. Maybe I'm completely wrong with that, but that's what I'm gonna guess. That's electric. That joke, so thanks. 2032 to 2037 is some of the details of some dues and fees. PMEA is the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association. County band, county choir, district band, festival for the middle school and the middle school participation in those. Some field trips for choir and band trip for honors band.
Are we done with middle school? Is that it? I was just wondering, and maybe I missed it. Are we not doing Biz Town or anything like that? Is that in there?
It's probably gonna be under our school counselors, perhaps? Or do you think it'll be under?
Sixth grade field trip? I think there, I think it looks like field trips are all together. I just wanna make sure we got it in here somewhere. But you're planning for it for next year too? Okay. We gotta find that one then.